Can, uh, let me see if he's all set back. Yep. Okay, we're gonna get going now. Good evening, welcome to the April 24th zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my, to my left is Marcia Wilkins from the planning department. I'm JP Boucher, the chair. Next to me here is Mary Ellen McKay, the secretary. Mr. Jeff Courier, the vice chair. Ms. Kate Forrier sitting in as part of the planning department. Mr. Steve Lionell, full-time member, and Mr. Robert Shaw as a full-time member. This meeting is recorded by a written transcript, audio, video, and, audio and video recording. Please direct all the testimony into the microphone and only one person to speak at a time, please. If you don't already have a copy of the agenda, it's right there on the side table. Tonight, we'll be hearing, we'll be hearing only requests for variances, so I'll just go over quickly what a variance is. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that an ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for approval of variance are, one, the variance will not be contrary to public interest; two, the spirit of, the spirit of the ordinance is observed; three, substantial justice is done; four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; five, literal enforcement of provisions of the ordinance would not, would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the city of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. Also, this board will hear all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting members are present at this meeting. We have five voting members present. Any citizen has a right to contest the decision that this board makes. We should, should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the City of Nashua Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to New Hampshire Superior Court, and you can contact Mr. Fark for more information. Mr. Fark is the deputy city planning manager for the city of Nashua. He is not here tonight, and Ms. Wilkins is sitting in for him. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is the public hearing. This is where the applicant and the citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. The order of testimony is, is as follows. The applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Then those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Those in opposition or with questions will have a limit of also five minutes to testify. The applicant then has five minutes to speak and rebuttal. And then, in the end, a representative, only one person of those in opposition or with questions will have five minutes to speak and rebuttal. Please direct all testimony to this board and not to, to the audience, please. If you have any questions about an application, they are to be directed to the board, and we will get them answered for you. The second part is the public meeting, where this board debates the merits of the case amongst ourselves. Please note that, that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. Please silence or turn off your cellphones. If you need to have a conversation, feel free to step out into the hallway. The acoustics in this auditorium are such that we can hear the slightest whispers and appreciate your cooperation. Is there any changes tonight, in tonight's agenda?
No, there are none.
Okay. So I would like to, any questions from the audience before we get started? I think I already asked that, but that's, just checking? All right. So we're gonna start with the first case, and I open the public hearing for Liberty Simon Street LLC. Applicant is the ID sign group, 26 Whipple Street. The description is the follows: requesting the following variances from the land use code section 190-101, table 101-7. To exceed maximum number of ground signs, one permitted, one existing, one additional ground sign proposed; and two, to exceed maximum ground sign in the area, 100 square feet permitted, 100 square feet existing, and then additional 100 square, 100 square feet proposed for a new sign, for a total of 200 square feet. It's in the PI zoning district. Now, welcome, and please give us your name and address, please.
Absolutely. Scott Cashman, ID sign group, Eastern Mass.
Would you like to present your case?
Absolutely. I'm representing Liberty Properties. They own the building right there where Resonetics is on Whipple Street, which is the last building on Whipple Street before you, I believe there's a park down at the end, right across the street from FedEx. That entire industrial park is an industrial park, and basically, all the signs in that area are about the same size of 100 square feet. They do have a sign, they actually had two signs at one point at both entrances. One was permitted, I'm not sure, I wasn't representing them back when we took over this, this project, but what they'd like to do is basically make a twin for down at the other exit. They've got probably about 250 feet to five, 300 feet from one exit to the entrance, rather, to the next. And what they'd like to do is, they wanna have the, the regular traffic going into the, the first entrance, but the tenants of the state, because the state department is gonna be in the other, the, the other tenant, they want their clients to go into the other, the parking lot. So what they've done is basically, they took that entire building, they took an entire wing off, built another parking lot. So what they're trying to do is get the traffic to go where they're supposed to go. So that's why we're, we're seeking the second sign, the, the permit for the second sign or the variance for the second sign, so it looks exactly like the first with the detail about which department goes into which entrance. That's what they're seeking the variance for.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add? We might have some questions for you.
Just that the, these signs were already built. We did take one of them out, there's only one sign on property right now which is permitted. So the other sign is already constructed and ready to go. They were done at the same time we took the second one out, and that's back at our shop. So they're seeking the variance to try to just make it a little legal, because it is the Department of the State, so.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Carter.
It looked like the Department of the State sign I saw was in the back corner of the building, like, is that right? Is, is it, and is, how many tenants? It looks like there's multi-tenants in this facility.
I believe it's Resonetics and the state, which, the Department of Health and Human Services are in that building.
Okay, so it's just the two of them?
At this point, it could be, I don't know what they're gonna plan on in the future, but at this point, there's just the two.
Okay.
Yeah, the state, the Department of Health and Human Services was there before. They just wanna put the signage, they wanna get the, they wanna basically get the car flow where they belong.
Okay. And then, in the application, it talks about directing the public and private parking. And when, when it says public parking, was that like alluding to people who are gonna park and go to the park?
No, not at all. There's no park parking in there, that area at all. It's basically, the public is the state tenants, the, the state visitors or clients that would go to visit Health and Human Services. And then the private is more for the Resonetics.
Okay, and then-
They're just trying to not to commingle the, the groups.
And then, the Health and Human Services group, I'm not really familiar, they have, they have different clients coming in there every day? I'm not really sure what they're-
Yes. That's what I'm told, is they have different clients, and they just don't want them, you know, they, I don't know why, but they just wanna keep them separate. I think it was asked by the state to keep it separate.
And then, on the sign in our application, like, I guess it's one that's there now, it says Liberty Woods Technology Center. There's six, I would call smaller signs. One says Resonetics, but I look at that like as if, say, there's gonna be six different tenants in the building. I would just wonder if you could, is, is the sign that's, so this sign is the one I'm talking about, is that the one that's, that's there, or the one that's there but removed?
That's the one that was there and taken out, but the one that is there currently still has the six tenants on it. They created that sign years ago, and that building was twice the size it is now. What they've done is basically, they took a wing off of that building. So it's not like they're gonna add more tenants to it, because that's, building is gone. They've actually put a parking lot in the footprint of that building.
Oh.
So that's why they're trying to, it's really confusing when you pull down there, 'cause you don't know whether to go in the first parking lot, which is Resonetics, or the second parking lot, which is the state, the Health Department.
All right. And I notice that the parking lot in the back looks all new.
Right.
So when you say like the, the building was, some of the building was taken down, was that all part of this recent effort where the, you know, building went and parking lot got added?
Yes. That's exactly what happened. You can look in Google Maps, I've already looked at it, and you can see the whole building was there. And now they've taken the entire left wing off, and that's all parking.
Okay.
And that, the reason for the size, one is because just to maintain that collaboration between the two signs, you see one sign, you see the next sign, your mind sends you to the next when you don't see that, your tenant name on there. So that's why we wanna go for the same size, because it is quite a distance away.
Okay. Well, I was gonna say, I mean, I can see a need for different signs at the different entrances, but my thought is, you know, it's a pretty large sign for, you know, it's a dead-end street, you know, and, and it just doesn't seem to me like there's gonna be twelve tenants, 'cause you have-
No, there's not.
You know, I mean, you might get two or three or four at the most, you know?
At the most, right.
And I, I was just curious why the sign had six placards on it.
It was a much larger building at one point.
Okay. All right, well, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Lionel.
For the clients of the State Department, they're gonna be coming by and they'll have, you know, address, 1 Whipple Street. And they'll likely be confused when they see the first sign and not know where to go, not even know that there is a second entrance. Is there a consideration of putting something that says Health and Human Services that way?
Yes. Yes, that is the, the desire to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, good. Okay, thank you, we might be back up.
Thank you very much.
Is anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this application? Is anybody in the audience with concerns or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I'm familiar with the old building, I actually had reason to be in there, previous, for Peter's employees, and I remember there was two signs, and it was pretty big, and I, I, I'm in general support of the application. I think that when you see that streets filled up with cars, especially during summertime, when the streets filled up, I think that actually the second sign is gonna be good for when they're coming down the street, you know, they're gonna end up seeing that, you know, they see both signs, but then they'll see the next entrance. And, and same, same here, I, I knew that there was, there were some other tenants in that, in that, in that building, and, and when I went down there, I couldn't believe that they had torn down part of that building, 'cause I thought it was just, like, but I also knew that it was hard to rent space down there. There's been some difficulties renting out of buildings, you know, in the past, but, so I'm not surprised that they, they took down part of the building, 'cause I couldn't figure out where this parking lot went, and I realized that they did take part of the building down. So, other than that, I, I don't see any really, for myself, I didn't see really any issues with that. This isn't in a, you know, we're in, we're in the park industrial. Everything surrounding it is, you know, it's UPS across the street, it's other businesses, so I really don't see it not kind of fitting into what's going on down on that, on that street.
I, I don't have a problem with the second sign. My main concern was that visitors who see the first sign are directed to go look for the second sign. Other than that, yeah, I agree, park industrial, and yes, that street does fill up with people using the soccer fields and, and Mind Falls Park was when I was down there. So it could be confusing to people who were not familiar with the area.
I, I guess I see the need for the second sign. I too worked in that building from 1985 to 1990. It was all one tenant, and all that second sign said was shipping and receiving. And I would say that, that there's a lot more people parking and using the park now than then. I mean, for, for all the time that I worked there, there was a few cars that would park there. And, and whenever I've gone down the last few years, the streets kind of filled up, which is, I consider that a good thing, I guess, people are using our parks. I, I think the sign is a little large with six placards on it for what's really needed, but I'm just open to what the other board members have to say. That's where I'm at.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I share some of your concerns, but I think kind of, again, it's also the, I think, the location of this property, it's actually, I mean, these are all relatively large properties, but this is even larger than some of the other ones there. With the two, with the, basically, the way this facility is being used and the intent to direct traffic to two different parts of, of the parcel, and with all the parking on the street there these days, again, for all the Mind Falls Park usage, I think anything that can help overall kind of get people to where they need to be at this site is reasonable, and I think these kind of signs are very typical and fit in a park industrial. So I guess, having the second sign, it, it seems like one of those that it, it's, it's a reasonable purpose because of the circumstances of this property and how it's being used.
Okay.
I concur with my fellow board members, and like Mr. Lionel, I was concerned about direction for the second parking lot and the, where DHHS would be. It really needs to be clearly delineated out. They will have a lot of traffic, and that makes logical common sense. I have no problem with this.
Exactly. And just a comment on that, I think that if there was no delineation or sign to go second exit, I think the receptionists at Resonetics would get tired of it after a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Because everybody would end up in the side of the building, right? So, all right, is anybody would like to make a motion? No, I don't make it myself.
Go for it.
Okay. I'd like to make, to make a motion to approve the area variance for Liberty Simon Street LLC, ID Sign Group Incorporated, 26 Whipple Street. They are requesting the following variances from the land use code section 190-101, table 101-7. To exceed the maximum number of ground signs, one permitted, one existing, one additional ground sign proposed; and two, to exceed the maximum ground sign in the area, 100 square feet permitted, 100 square feet existing, and additional 100 square feet proposed for a new sign for a total of 200 square feet. It's in the PI zoning district. We find that the variances need to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. In our discussions, what we talked about was is mainly the, one of the largest pieces of property on, in that, in that, on that, on Whipple Street, it is at the end of the street, it has a lot of road frontage. We find that having that sign in the second entrance will help direct the traffic to where it needs to go. It is within the spirit and intent of the audience. It will not adversely affect the property values surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to public interest if substantial justice would be served. Second by Mr. Shaw, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? That is five, that's unanimous. Motion passes. So, thank you, just a cautionary rule that there is a third day window of appeal, just, just in case something were to happen. Okay? All right, thank you. I'd like to, first, I, if I didn't, I wanna make sure I close the public meeting on the first case, and then we'll open the public hearing on that, on the second case. I'll read that into the record. The owner is Michael Rose, Rosas, and I apologize if I pronounce that incorrectly, and Fabian M. and Marsalia Abalos, 1 Levine Street. They are requesting a use variance for land use code section 190-15, number six, to convert an existing single-family home into a two-family home. ZBA approved a two-family home on 3/11/2003, but the building permit was never applied for. And two, variance from the land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, for a minimum land area of 12,232 square feet, existing 18,000 square feet required. It's in the R9 zoning district. Would the applicant like to come up? Please give us your name and address, please.
My name is Hugo Gutierrez, and I'm from One Crystal Drive, Mary McNeil, Hampshire.
Okay.
And I'm a friend of the family. We kindly request and ask permission from the town to allow us to convert a single-family into two-family, and we strongly believe that it meets the five criterias that the city is looking for. It's conforming with the neighborhood. I also wanted to tell you, I'm a real estate broker, and I have thirty years' experience in real estate, very familiar with the city of Nashua, and I can professionally say that the neighborhood is conforming with two families all around there. It's within the guidelines of the city, and also the hardship that they have, they're on the mandate of the state for deleting the property. Under circumstances, they don't have the money to do that by themselves. They have to apply to the city to be able to be helped, to do that. The city requesting the letpaying department, it says that it will make very easy for them if they go back and get this as a two-family, so they can get the best benefits out of the program that we have here.
Anything else?
I think the value, so the, it's not gonna evaluate the properties around, it's just gonna help instead of value.
So is it currently, I'm sorry, I was just asking a question. Is it currently being used as a two-family?
It's currently used as a one-family, but his daughter was living on the second floor. It has been from the beginning with two kitchens, bathrooms on every floor. It has been set up as a two-family. Used to be, I don't know if you're familiar with the St. Joseph's Church, that was the pastoral house, pastoral house.
Okay. All right. And how, how long has the applicant lived at this property?
He bought the property in 2011.
Okay.
I'm sorry, 2012. 2012.
Okay, 2012. And, and just curious, and, and not that it really, it doesn't matter for me, but I'm just curious, did the applicant know that, did he, did he assume that it was a two-family bought, or did he know it was, it was history?
When we, I was the realtor who assisted them buying it. The previous seller told us that he did the paperwork to convert it into two-family, but he never relayed to us that he needed to go and get the permits. He says, oh, it's already permitted.
Okay, all right. Okay, understandable. Okay.
I'll ask a question, please.
Sure, Ms. McKay.
Could you do me a favor, please, and spell your last name?
Last name is G.U.T. Asimomas, I.E.R.R.E.Z.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we might have you back up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody in the audience that would like to speak with concerns or in opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Yes, Mr. Carter.
Well, my, my thoughts are, you know, it's compelling to me that the ZBA had approved this many years ago. What it seems like, you know, they, and it was requested for a three and scaled back to a two, there was a lot of opposition by, seems every a butter, three a butters, about the, you know, the, the intensity of a three unit, and, and then it's, you know, it was scaled back to a two. There's no opposition here tonight. I think the size of the unit and the parking that's there supports a two, so I, I'm feeling favorable to it. I see it as the zoning board did many years ago. That's where my opinion is at.
Mr. Lionel.
Reading the minutes of the previous meeting was, was fascinating, and one of the things I, I noticed was that a lot of the objection related to the number of vehicles, including some unregistered vehicles that were parked in and around the property from the previous owner, and I, that does not appear to be the case today. So, the other thing was, I was looking at the assessing card, and there was a concern raised at some point, or there have been multiple visits by code enforcement, that this was being used as a, I think the term in the zoning card was flop house in the past, and this is not, not since the current owner has it. But, so this, this building has quite an interesting history. When I looked at it, I said, you mean it's not already a two-family? Because it looks like it with the, the external staircase leading up to the second floor. It looks really quite nice, and, and obviously, they're not gonna be making, doesn't seem to be, they're gonna be making any changes to the external, exterior of the structure. So I, and also, given that the ZBA previously approved this as a two-family, I'm in support of it.
Mr. Shaw.
I pretty much concur with what's been said.
Ms. McKay.
Yeah, ditto, I agree.
All right, and I, I'm in full agreeance also. Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Carter.
I'll make a motion on behalf of McCall Rosas and Fabian and Marcial Abalos. The address again is 1 Levine Street, and, so we have two requests tonight. The first is, and I'm gonna make a, a motion to approve them both in the same motion, actually. So we have a use variance, and, well, an area variance for minimum land area, 12,232 square feet is existing, 18,000 square feet is required. And I'm also making a motion to approve the use variance, which is to convert an existing single-family home into a two-family home. And again, the ZBA had approved this two-family home on March 11th, 2003, but the building permit was never applied for after the granting was provided by the ZBA. I believe this variance, the use in the area variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. And the special conditions are that the home is large, and it has been essentially been a two-family home for, for quite a few years, and given the lack of opposition testimony, the board finds that it functions adequately as a two-family home. And therefore, even though there is both a use and an area permit, a variance needed tonight, I think the board finds that these both are within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The board notes that there's no changes planned to the property, and the board finds it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. I believe, we believe, the board believes that, you know, the house has been functioning as a two-family, and really, there's no change, we're kind of cleaning up the paperwork, you might say. And I think the board finds it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is done, so I make a motion to approve as applied.
Second, second by Mr. Lionel, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? That's five, that's unanimous. So congratulations, your motion passes.
Yes. Yeah, so you'd let her catch up a minute.
Sure. I'll just hold. So, so congratulations, your motion passes. There is a, obviously, a thirty-day window of appeal, just keep that in mind, but thank you very much. All right. So with that, I close the public hearing on this case, and we're gonna take a, just a short break for Mrs. McKay to catch up.
Seconded by Steve for both of them, and unanimous.
Close the public meeting, excuse me. Close the public meeting, excuse me.
All right.
Like to open the public hearing for case number three, which is Charlotte P. Tebow, revocable trust. Applicant is John Stewart. Address is three ninety-three Main Street. We are going to address the Fisher v Dover issue first, and then bear with us for a little bit. I'm new to this. I've been here for several years, but this is always something that we take very good care of, making sure we try to get right. So I'm going to read the description, and we're just going to address the Fisher v Dover issue first. So we are, the description is requesting a determination whether a material change of circumstances affecting the merits of the application has occurred, or that the application is for a use that materially differs in nature and degree from the use variance advances that were denied by the ZBA on two twenty-seven, two thousand and We have a little discussion, just so we can set ourselves up. Maybe I'd love to, Mr. Curry, Mr. Shaw, just to kind of set us up.
Sure, I guess maybe I'll just kick things off and say that by law, zoning boards can't hear the same case over and over again, and that was settled in a person named Fisher versus the town of Dover. And in summary, if there's a case that's brought back to a board a second time, as is the case with this, the board needs to deliberate and come to a conclusion on either two criteria, as Mr. Boucher had mentioned, and one was, is the area, the surrounding area has changed, or if the request is materially different. So what we're bound to do is first, not hear any testimony on the case itself, but just deliberate and come to a conclusion on whether it's that the area, the surrounding area is materially different, or the request is materially different. Typically, we just discuss this among ourselves, but we, there have been, we have received testimony at times in writing and orally from the public on previous cases. So I, if, I'd be willing, if there's folks who want to testify just to the Fisher v Dover element, I'd be willing, I think, I think we should hear that. But of course, it just has to be to the Fisher v Dover, which is, is it materially different versus the merits of the case? So I don't know if I've overspoken myself, but that's my two cents.
So with Mr. Curry's very wise suggestion, is everybody comfortable with, I will actually query the audience to see if anybody would like to speak on the Fisher v Dover issue itself and not the case? So basically, I would be asking to just talk about whether or not we, you know, there's any, any testimony on whether or not materially, there's a material change or not, belief on that.
We do have, we do have written submitted testimony on that issue. It was sent to us by email. This, this.
Right.
No, it was a week ago. April seventeen. I don't know if I have.
You're referring to this, which we've got today.
No.
No. Mr. Lionel is referring to this was in an email from Mr. Falk yesterday, or today.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Just going to take a look at this real quick.
We're just going to take a few minutes just to review this.
Okay, I had read that, yeah.
So I'm just going back to my original discussion where we pretty much discussed this among ourselves in the past. Do we want to, do we feel comfortable in going ahead and just asking for specific testimony on Fisher v Dover?
I feel we should ask for it, and, you know, for five minutes. I mean, we do have this, and this is part of the record.
Right.
And this is speaking just to the Fisher v Dover.
Right.
You know, in advocating that it does meet the test.
Okay, so what I'll do right now is I'll just make a record, knowing that we did receive communication on April seventeenth from Mr. Thomas C. Burns, a professional engineer, and the letter basically is in, is stating that, that they, that he believes that there is significant material change in this application from previous advertised, so it is in, it is specifically saying that, that is in favor, would be actually in favor, not in favor, would actually saying that, that the material change exists enough that the case should be reheared. So there's, we have testimony that, that is in favor of a rehearing. So now, we also know that there may be some people in the audience that have some concerns or issues with the case, and so if there's anybody in the audience right now that wants to speak to that with, you know, any concerns or opposition to our rehearing, we will discuss this after. You're welcome to come up, and again, this is the time not to discuss the merits of the case for the application here, but it's really to address whether or not Fisher v Dover applies in this case. And again, Mr. Curry said it the best, we're looking to see, we have to decide whether or not there's been a significant material change, or the area has changed significantly.
Or the laws have changed.
Or the laws have changed since this was heard in April, just recently.
February.
February. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak to Fisher v Dover? Please come up, give me your name and address, please.
He has, what, five minutes?
Yes, he has five minutes.
We don't have a clock, but.
Yes, we do. I'm doing it.
You've got the clock.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Siciliano, and I live at ninety-five Taylor Street here in Nashua. Since the last hearing in February, I can't speak to if the laws have changed. I would not know that. I certainly can attest that the neighborhood hasn't changed. The neighborhood is virtually the same as it was six weeks ago. However, I believe that the applicant is approaching the ZBA, requesting this variance in regarding Fisher versus Dover. I believe that in nature, to a certain degree, it's the same application. They are still looking to increase density in the neighborhood at three ninety-three Main Street. They are still looking to alter the character of the neighborhood. Based on those two facts, I believe that it is the same application by nature, a lesser degree of it, but I believe it is the same.
Okay, is there any questions? Okay, well said.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that'd like to speak on the Fisher v Dover issue for this case? Okay, with that, we'll continue our discussion here. Mr. Lionel.
Given, well, I've been on the board for less than a year and a half now, but when we've had this sort of discussion in the past, changing the, let's say, the number of requested units, that is a material change in the application. And in fact, when we heard this back in February, we had actually said that, well, if they come back as a, you know, with, let's say, a three-family application, we, you know, we would be, you know, possibly consider it. I think it's appropriate to rehear this request.
Okay, okay. Mr. Curry.
So I don't think there's been a change of laws, and I don't think the neighborhood's changed in, you know, since, I think it was February twenty-seventh when we heard the case. But, you know, it's, it is three, a request for three units instead of four, and I've always felt that a request of this, you know, dropping a number of units, even though it's not what we're hearing tonight, or if something's changing, say, from a two-family to an accessory dwelling unit, those are elements to me that it is a materially different case. I mean, the one thing that catches my attention, though, was some of the data we had, and I just wanted to bring this out, I was, from the February twenty-seventh case, you know, there was this information of, you know, that was presented as part of the record, and it was, you know, an assessment of the number of units in the neighborhood, and I could, you could kind of summarize it by how many were single-family, two-family, three-family, four-family. You know, a single-family in this pie chart was a hundred and forty-nine units, two-family, ten, three-family, two, and four-family was none. And with that hard data, which is to me pretty hard data, when you look at four versus three, hmm, you know, it's still, it's still outside the tail of the bell curve, you might But on the other hand, it is a fifty percent reduction of what they're asking. So I'm on the fence of it, and I guess I just, I see what the other opinions are here. I feel I could go either way on that.
Ms. McKay.
You know, I kind of agree with Mr. Curry, and the data I'm looking at now just says two, three families, a hundred and forty-nine single families. It's, I don't know, I don't know that it's all that materially different in my head. I'm not sure that I truly believe this is different. It's the same, just one step down, just a little bit smaller. And if the documentation or the data showed that there were maybe fifty or a larger group, it might be closer to a material change. But with only two, I'm not so sure it meets the criteria. So like Mr. Curry, ah, the jury's out yet. I'm not sure which way. I'd like to listen to see here what Mr. Shaw has to say, too. Been here longer than I have.
Mr. Shaw.
I think I'm finding myself very much on that kind of precipice. It's, it is, you know, you can kind of use the numbers to make it sound more or less. You can talk about going from four units to three units is, you know, a twenty-five percent difference. You can talk about two additional units versus one additional unit is a fifty percent difference, or kind of that. In general, we're talking about one unit, you know, one or two units versus two existing units. So it's a much, you know, the percentages are larger versus if we're talking about a existing seven unit, and we're talking about adding the eighth or ninth unit types of things. So there is that part of me that says, yeah, this is, this is definitely the lesser intensive use, and it does, you know, in the minutes, there was some discussion about that. I think Ms. McKay kind of commented on it, and Mr. Falk noted that we'd have to go through the Fisher v Dover. So I think even then, there was, you know, recognition that this, this could happen this way, but it wasn't still clear-cut, and I think that's what we're up against. I feel like I'm leaning a little more towards, towards going forward with this, in that if, if I feel like I or we are that marginal as to, does this meet the test or not, I guess I, I feel like we should go through the process of hearing the case and hearing the arguments surrounding it, and that, I don't see that then there's a bunch more increments that happen from here. This is, you know, that they're not going to, I mean, I guess, short of adding, like, accessory dwelling unit or something, there's not much else that, you know, to do from where the things are already at, so. But I'm, I still feel like if there's a strong argument why this really doesn't meet the criteria being, you know, substantially different from the previous request, I think I definitely am open to that. But right now, I think I would lean towards the hearing this case, that it is possibly just different enough that it should warrant that.
I'm in the same position that you are, Mr. Shaw and Mr. Curry. I wasn't sure where I was at, but I was definitely leaning a little bit more to, I'm not saying erring on the side of caution, it's more of going through the process, and I've been there since I, you know, received this, this information, and I think that I'm still there. So I think at this point, I would now make a strong decision just to go ahead with rehearing the case. Mr. Curry.
I think it's an accurate phrase to say err to the side of caution, and err to the side of caution is when, when, when I'm, when a board is unsure if, you know, is teetering on, is this significant or not, it is a more conservative approach to say, well, let's hear the case and based on its merits. So I'm leaning towards, you know, after hearing the discussion, I, I'm leaning towards, yeah, three is materially different than four, even though we have some data already that says it isn't, just, just on the downsizing of it and the discussion from the last meeting, I'm leaning towards hearing the case. Or I should say that it, it does meet the Fisher v Dover test, so that's what I'm angling towards.
All right. Okay, any other discussion?
Want me to make a motion?
Sure, please.
I'm going to make a motion that upon hearing, the board considering some.
Excuse me, Mr. Curry, I probably should go in the public meeting for this, or not? Does it matter?
Oh, I thought we were.
I don't think.
I guess essentially, we had gone to a public meeting after we heard the testimony.
Okay, all right.
Official identifying, but I would say that by practice, that is what we had.
Yeah, I thought we were back in public.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem. So after consideration of the written testimony and a little bit of oral testimony that we've heard tonight, I'm going to make a motion that this request before us does meet the Fisher v Dover test, and that it is substantially different from the previous request of February twenty-seventh, in that there's a request for three units instead of four units. So I make a motion to, that it does meet the Fisher v Dover test.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's five, that's unanimous? Okay. So with that, we're going to move forward, and re-read the case back, so we're going to open the public hearing for Charlotte P. Tebow, revocable trust. Applicant's John Stewart, address is three ninety-three Main Street. They're requesting a use variance for land use code, section one ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, to convert an existing two-family home into a three-unit multifamily building, and two variants from land use code, section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three, for minimum land use area, twelve thousand four hundred and eighty square feet, existing twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet required. It is in the RA zoning district. Welcome, and give your name and address, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Tom Burns. I am a project manager with TF Moran, forty-eight Constitution Drive in Bedford, New Hampshire, here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Mr. John Stewart, regarding this application for a change of use from an existing two-unit residential dwelling to a three-unit dwelling. As you just discussed, we were here in February, we were seeking approval for. As you just discussed, we were here in February, we were seeking approval for a four-unit, four total residential units within the structure, and we've reduced that application size down to three, as you just, as you just stated. Additionally, as part of one of the, the changes from the application that was presented in February, there is no proposal to add any additional parking on the exterior of the site, so there'll be no, no site changes whatsoever in, involved with this application. It's all interior fit-up that would be done to, to create the third unit within the building. So that, I know that that was a concern that was brought up by some of the members of the community that were here that spoke, and as well as members of the board, about whether that was changing the character of the neighborhood by adding the three parking spaces out front. Those have been eliminated, there's, with reducing down to three potential units, there's more than enough parking on the site as it exists today, that parking's no longer needed. There was a question of the lot area that was discussed last time with the board. Our offices had the opportunity to do some more research, research with the city, we revised the, the exhibit plan that was presented to you, based on the assessors' records for the lot. We were asked by the zoning administrator whether or not a full boundary survey and detailed survey of the lot would be done prior to zoning, or whether that would typically be done. Typically, we, we don't do that unless we're going, until the point we're going to Planning Board, pending the outcome of a zoning board hearing, to then get a detailed survey of the property. So, absence of a boundary survey of the lot, we base it on research at the Registry of Deeds and at the city, and the surveyors went back and they re-reviewed the records, and so the lot area, as you'll see on the plan, more matches what the city's records have of it, and at this point, that is the lot area that, that we feel is accurate for the parcel. Another question that was raised at the board was the status of the two units in, in the home, how long it had been a two-family, or when it had been a two-family, from the applicant whose family has owned the home for many decades, you know, indicated that there had been, had been a second tenant in the house going back as far as the nineteen forties. We did go back looking through the assessors' records here at the city, the, the assessors have, through the citywide assessments, going back over twenty-five years, we found that it has been indicated as a two-family in the city's records, on the assessing records. Going back to nineteen ninety-eight, building permits that were pulled indicated it as a two-family as well, when the second electrical panel was put in. So we continue to be confident and comfortable in stating that this has been a two-family residence that, at this point, may predate the zoning requirements for it in the zone, if it's going back as many decades as, as the owner has, has stated, but certainly going back, we're looking at at least twenty-five years by the city's records. So, going forward, the request is to add one additional unit to the two units that are, that are in the home now. And as discussed at the previous hearing, this is an existing, classified as existing ten-bedroom home. It is a, it is a large, a large residential structure that's on the corner of Main Street and East Dunstable, again, has ample parking to support the additional unit and the ability to allow for the renovations of the interior without alteration to the exterior of the site. That being said, and looking at the five criteria, we believe that the application is consistent with the public interest, given that, again, with, now with no exterior changes proposed to the site or the building, the use would not alter the essential character of the property itself, nor the, the, affect the, the safety, health, and welfare of the public or the surrounding, the, the surrounding neighbors. Observing the spirit of the ordinance, the size of the existing structure makes the use a reasonable and appropriate one for the, because, as again, the building can support the additional unit without alteration to the outside of the structure, alteration to the site. So once again, no alteration to the character of the property as it, as it is viewed by the surrounding neighborhood. Looking at the question of substantial justice for it, again, there would be no harm to the general public by adding an additional unit to the house, to, to the house. Point of fact, in southern New Hampshire, we have, you know, we certainly have a need for, for housing in the area, so it could be a benefit to the public for somebody looking for, for a residential unit to rent. And the, for the applicant, the benefit obviously would be substantial, in that they have a ten-bedroom house that has two units in it now, and it would certainly make it easier to, to rent out if they're able to reduce the size of those units, rather than having a six-bedroom and a four-bedroom as it's currently constituted, being able to, to split those up to make the additional unit. The use would not diminish the value of the surrounding properties. Again, the changes would be accommodated within the existing structure, allowing us to preserve the outside of the structure, preserve the character of the lot, and therefore not have a visible change to the neighborhood. As the information packet that was handed out by the public at the last meeting indicated, and as you cited, the, the units, the density of the surrounding neighborhood, there is in fact a three-bedroom, a three-unit residence that is two units, I believe it's two units south of the site, and there's a second three-bedroom one that's, I think it's either two or three units north of the site, one of them on a lot that's of similar size to the slot. And then lastly, the, the use again being a reasonable one for the property, as it's, given its location adjacent to the intersection, we have a controlled intersection, we have, again, three units, proposing three units versus what is there now, the number of additional vehicles, certainly looking at, if the number of bedrooms is not changing, if you're adding one additional unit, the number of vehicles traveling to and from the site is not likely to increase substantially with the addition of the one unit. So we're not looking at a significant traffic issue or a safety issue from this site, we're using the existing curb cuts that are already there, we're not changing those, altering that at all. And again, regarding the, the substantial justice or hardship of the site, it's just looking at the existing structure, the size of it, allowing for a third unit in that structure just creates a situation that it's easier for the owner to be able to utilize that structure, given its somewhat unique size in the area, and allowing for the potential to get a, a better, more substantial use from the building than what he currently can do with the two units with the number of bedrooms that are in them now. So, be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Mr. Curryer?
Just wondering on the, I think the requirement is two parking spaces per unit, so if, if there were three units, I, I would anticipate six cars, minimum. What would, how, where would those cars park? How would that work on the, would there be like, say, that kind of drive-through, would that be for one unit, or, I mean, was, was there a plan? I'm wondering for how that parking is proposed.
So currently, that drive-through is used as a, as a pull-through drive-through, both by the owner. When I've been out to the site, I've used that to pull through the site as well. That, that driveway could potentially be used for units, however, and there also are three spaces that are located on the existing parking pad that's off of the rear driveway. There is a two-car garage underneath the house, and that pad can accommodate a number of parking, the existing driveway itself can accommodate a number of parking spaces as well. So it's, it's a matter of how they may want to assign parking spaces to it, but at a minimum, you have five spaces at, at the very, without blocking, without any potential blocking in that lower lot, and then the potential for up to three cars on that pull-through if they wanted, and if we're looking at, say, an average, say, six cars for three units, there'd certainly be enough space to put them in there.
All right, thank, thank you. Perhaps the only question I have-
Other questions? Mr. Shaw?
Just a quick clarification, it's only one and a half parking spaces per unit, so-
Correct.
Okay.
But, and your, your plan says there's actually twelve available, potentially, I don't know if that's like, essentially if you park every single possible spot-
Yeah, I think then you'd be dealing, yeah, then you would have tenants having to work around, right? They'd have to be, you know, or you'd have, if one unit's being occupied, you know, you could have one in the garage, somebody that's in that unit as well, parking directly behind it type of thing. That's, that's a maximum that you could get on the site, and we want to demonstrate that certainly the site has, has the available parking, as it had in the previous application. At the time when we presented three additional spaces, the idea was to, you know, improve kind of the geometry of that front part, front drive-through, and allow to, to kind of eliminate the potential for people coming in two different directions pulling in it. We were gonna kind of angle the parking, but certainly we're aware that that was, that was an issue, that it was gonna alter the, the appearance of the lot by adding the spaces and, and reducing the number of units. We certainly don't need to add those spaces now.
I did have a specific question I did want to ask, and that is, what is the approximate square footage of the structure for living space? Do you know that? I don't recall seeing it, and I might have overlooked it, but-
Finished area is almost thirty-seven hundred square feet.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Lino?
When we heard this case in February, we were given some testimony, which we've got another copy of today, questioning the, the number of bedrooms in this, in this building. Are there actually ten distinct bedrooms that are being used as bedrooms? And if so, you know, if, if the, the building supposedly has twelve rooms total, what are the other rooms? Please, please give your, your name and-
Good evening, board. Name is John Stewart, applicant, two ninety-two, one-on-one in Bedford. To answer your question, it has been, you know, utilized, my, my great-aunt Charlotte is the current owner, so it has been underutilized. Many of the rooms right now, even though they are considered bedrooms, she's, you know, formal living room, formal dining room, that kind of stuff, have closets. You have, it's a ten-bedroom house, it's listed on Zillow and many of the other websites as a ten-bedroom house as well. Just find that information on the public, on any public website you visit. There are three bedrooms upstairs that are open, concept, at least one of them, which the walls were taken down. So it's right now uses one large bedroom, simply put the wall back up. But yeah, it's a, it's a very large house with, and ten bedrooms. I mean, thinking outside my head, I believe that's accurate, it might even be, you know, eleven bedrooms, but no, it's, it's large. And the, the intent of it would be to add closets to each bedroom. Most tenants today don't want a dining room and a living room, they want a bedroom, but that's, that's how it is right now, is a, is a formal living room, formal dining room, et cetera.
Any questions for Mr. Stewart? Mr. Shaw, could you come back?
I guess, I just, what would also maybe help me, and again, I apologize if I missed, overlooked this somewhere also, but how many, the three units that you would, if you, if this were to be approved?
Yes, sir.
What would be the configuration? How many bedrooms for each unit?
So right now, the actual config, it actually is set up perfectly for a three unit right now. We have two separate entrances, the entrance on the south side of the building, I guess you would call it, next to the neighbor's house at three ninety-three and a half, has its own separate entrance to the second floor. The front entrance uses a foyer, would go straight in to the bottom or the main floor unit, and the upstairs stairwell would take it to this, the third unit. So it would be individual, the, you know, again, main floor through the front entrance, go up the stairs from the front entrance to the second apartment, and the third apartment has its own side entrance, so there'll be no alterations in that case. The side apartment that has its own door, its own entrance, excuse me, has two bedrooms. The one that we'd be looking to make as a third unit has currently three bedrooms, but it's only because a wall was taken down to make it a master bedroom, so that actually could be a four-bedroom unit, one of which, or a partial part of that would make a kitchen. And then downstairs is currently two, or three, three bedrooms, I believe it is, and the main one is like twelve hundred square feet, so, or nine, it's a very large master bedroom with an en suite and a deck, so that can easily be broken down to more bedrooms. I don't have any intention of doing any of this, I'm just letting you know. Downstairs is the main floor, and upstairs is two separate apartments, easily be able to accommodate the flow of traffic without any safety issues or fire or anything like that at all.
So just, I think I heard you say, one would be a two-bedroom, one would be a three-bedroom-
Yes, sir. One would be a three-bedroom, the other one would be a three-bedroom.
Three or four?
Three, we're gonna keep it a three-bedroom, yes, sir. It could be a four, but we'll keep it as a three.
Okay.
So, so two at three and one at two? Two, two three-bedrooms and one two-bedroom?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, we'll probably have you back up. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none? Any, any in the audience who'd like to speak with concerns or opposition to this application? Please come on up, give you a name and address, please.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Before I speak to my testimony, could I distribute a letter from a citizen who could not be here tonight?
Absolutely. Hand it to Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is Michael Siciliano. I reside at ninety-five Taylor Street in Nashua. I oppose the applicant's request for variance to convert the structure at three ninety-three Main Street to a, to a three-family building. The requested variance would be contrary to the public interest and will not observe the spirit of the ordinance, because it is not consistent with the character of the neighborhood and will increase density substantially. The materials that I have provided to you include a neighborhood map, a spreadsheet that analyzes one hundred and sixty-one residential properties located within eight-hundred-and-sixty-five foot radius of three ninety-three Main Street, a distance which allows the subject property to be visually noticed from north and south approaches. A hundred and forty-nine, ninety-three percent of those properties are single-family residences. Only ten, six percent, are two-family residences. Although two structures appear to be three-family residences, neither have been approved as such. Three ninety-two Main Street, which has sufficient land square footage to support three-family use, is in fact a two-family residence with an in-law apartment. According to the planning department property folder of four oh-two Main Street, the structure is a legal two-family home. The third unit is illegal. Therefore, after further detailed review of the public record, there are no legal, ZB-approved, three-family unit multifamily buildings in this neighborhood. Increase, increase in the permitted configuration at three ninety-three Main Street to three units is substantial, is a substantial increase in density on the subject parcel and is inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. In terms of square footage, six thousand two hundred and forty square foot per unit becomes four thousand one hundred and sixty square foot per unit, on a parcel that is smaller than the average parcel in the area. The average parcel size is thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-eight square feet, and more than ninety-two percent of the homes are single-family homes. Moreover, moreover, the increased density is greater than the numbers show, because the second unit is an in-law unit, as stated in the assessor's comments and per the building department records. Review of deeds and city directories from the last century show that the property has been owner-occupied since nineteen twenty-seven. There is also evidence that the owner herself considers a property to be either a single-family residence or a single-family with in-law apartment, as shown on building permit applications as recent as July two thousand and five. There are filed, that are filed and were included in the materials, that of which I provided to you. The applicant should not be allowed to bootstrap from a structure with an in-law unit, which historically has been owner-occupied, to a three-family unit. Granting this application will substantially diminish the value of surrounding properties and create a likelihood of unusual dense occupancy, with the possibility or even likelihood of students renting units and doubling up. It's likely that a three-unit property will be occupied by at least six and possibly nine to twelve unrelated persons. In effect, the property could become a college dormitory, a fraternity house, with the noise and traffic and attendant confusion that would accompany such a use. Such a situation would substantially affect the value of surrounding properties and the owner's quiet enjoyment thereof, and would be inconsistent with the character of this quiet neighborhood of single-family homes, most of which are owner-occupied. Substantial justice to the property owner and applicant does not require that the variance be granted, and liberal enforcement of the ordinance does not, in, does not result in an unnecessary hardship. The existing twelve-room structure is described of having ten bedrooms, but that can be the case only if every room, not a kitchen, is considered a bedroom. Moreover, the owner has increased the improved area of the property within the last fifteen years, by finishing attic space as a playroom and expanding an existing bedroom with addition over the garage, the latter on specific condition that the renovated space not be used as a living unit. It is disingenuous for the applicant now to claim that those recent improvements create a hardship, requiring conversion, that is inconsistent with the character and density of the neighborhood. If the board establishes a precedent for finding a hardship just because the applicant has a large house-
Thirty seconds.
-then all the grand houses in Nashua will be at risk of being turned into tenements. I'll take any questions from the board.
Any questions?
Well, I guess, on what we received this evening-
Yes.
Uh-
Did you cover all that? There's a lot of stuff here highlighted that I haven't looked at, I think there's.
I did not cover it all, there's not enough time to. That's why I presented to you each individual information folders on all of that detailed data.
Most of this is, he also presented to us in February.
There, there is some additional information in the back.
There's some, yeah, but majority of it is, was, we also saw in February.
I didn't have any more questions. I was going to take a few moments at some point just to cover the other items here.
Does the board want to take a few minutes just to review the documentation you gave us, or is there any other questions?
I'd say we just keep moving through the public hearing.
Okay. All right, any other questions for, yes, Mr. Shaw?
So, I mean, one of the things that's always a challenge for the board is dealing with kind of the hypotheticals. And I appreciate your point and concern about, you know, the, maybe a large occupancy by, you know, basically the whole idea of it turning into a college dorm or some, something of that nature. But guess what I also wonder about, the flip side of that, is it seems like it might be just as likely, or maybe even more likely, that if the board doesn't approve an official multi-family use, that the owner could consider just renting out a six-bedroom and a four-bedroom, or however chooses to configure it. And I'm not sure that actually does anything to necessarily alleviate that concern. So I was wondering if you have any comments or thoughts about that.
Yeah, I believe that renting out bedrooms or rooms is not allowed in the RA zone. Comes to lodging and boarding, and I think that's part of the building code in Nashua. I don't think that's allowed individual rooms to be rented out.
That's not my point. It would be, let's say, you know, a group of friends basically rents a unit, but it's got six bedrooms. And then, you know, they occupy it on one lease, it's not, you know, each individual. So I just, I see a scenario that's still legal, but could, could kind of develop your concern, and I just.
Yeah, I, I think technically, four or more people cannot run an individual home if they're not related in the RA zone. But I don't know if that answers your question. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else like to speak with concerns or opposition to this application?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Presley, and I live at eleven Orchard Avenue. And would you be so kind to turn to the page that was prepared for you by the previous speaker? It's a wonderful example of what we're dealing with in this neighborhood. Also, I think this type of an application is a perfect example of some of the problems that you folks have to deal with on a regular basis. Where over in the older neighborhoods, where people have lived for over a hundred years, people have added on, done all sorts of things to their properties, sometimes with approval and sometimes without. And so you're, we're at a point now where I think that's the case here, that a lot of the expansions, making this a huge building, have caused a huge problem. My property is one of the two families. And it's, I think it's the only two-family in this whole group that actually was built as a two-family. And it's current, I placed it on the State Registry of Historic Places because it is a unique structure in Orchard Heights. That area is called Orchard Heights. We also have a very unusual, beautiful, original barn. I'm sure it's one of the only ones in the city on that same street. And we also have a Sears catalog artar house. So I'm telling you this because a lot of these neighborhoods in the South End have been, not, you haven't looked at it, the quality of the structures and the importance they are to the city. If you look at that round circle, you can see the property is really, it's a strange lot. It's a triangle. The two busiest streets on there, of course, is Main Street and East Unstable. And their frontage, over fifty percent of their property, in fact, you probably are better at judging distances, their frontage is on two of the busiest streets in this area. And, which means the access is going to be a nightmare. If more people and more automobiles are allowed on that section, it will be, I think, a really safety hazard for the whole community. I hope all of you have traveled there. I don't know if you've traveled by this during peak hours. But during peak hours, it is really tough. So much so, where I live, I don't even, sometimes don't even try to get out on the Main Street. I have to take an out-of-the-way place to avoid the congestion on that corner. And it's not really a corner. I don't know what you call it, it looks more like about a thirty-five degree angle there. So it's a problem, traffic-wise, it's a problem now. If you add more automobiles, say nothing about the number of people, but unless you can restrict somehow the number of automobiles that they can have in these units, I beg you, please put a stipulation or something on there. Because can you imagine, look, look at that, that angle there. The lights there are very difficult. And look, all of the residential neighborhoods that feed into that area. So by adding any density there will really, I think, pose a real safety hazard for the, for the whole community. I'd like to let you know, the owners of three ninety had hoped to come tonight, but they had a last-minute medical emergency. They're the ones that have the barn, it's one of the larger lots. And that is a single-family. Almost all of these properties in this area started out as single-families, with the exception of mine. I may be wrong, but I don't know the, all the details of the other sites. But as far as I know, I'm the only one in this whole circle that is a legitimate, built as two-family. It's a one-over-one, I'm very proud of it. So please consider the neighborhood, the safety, and thank you very much.
Any questions for Mrs. Presley? No? Okay, thank you. Anybody else with concerns or oppositions to the application?
Good evening. My name's Joe DeLuca, and I live at twenty-one Clement Street in Nashua. And I am in opposition, but it's nothing against Mr. Stewart. It's just, is it a hardship? Does it really need to be brought to a three-family? There are other places in the city that people have got approvals, or maybe they didn't, and they're loaded with cars. They're terrible to look at. I won't mention the property locations because I don't think that's the place to do right now, here. But it's just, without having some restraint, and codes are there for a reason. Someone sat down and put codes together and said, this is going to be happening, this one, and this one. And unless it's a hardship, then you release it. If I got to go into the hospital, takes them to the hospital, fifty miles an hour down Main Street, I'm illegal. But if I'm running at fifty miles an hour because I want to get the Dunkin' Donuts before it closes, that's illegal. You know, hardships have their place, but I don't see the hardship here. You know, it's just an overreach, and a lot of properties in Nashua being overused. I mean, drive, you can drive around if you want, I mean, I won't, again, mention places. Again, one thing he said, though, not everybody needs a kitchen, not everybody needs a living room and a dining room. I don't know if that was said. That's a boarding house. We just went through that with the YMCA. I mean, everybody needs a living room. I mean, what if we can all use the same living room? That's a boarding house now. Now you're adding more stipulation and more wiggle room to get what you want and depreciating the property. It's a beautiful piece of property. I mean, maybe he can't afford to buy it and use it as a three-family. Then it needs to be sold to someone that's going to keep it as a two-family. You know, so, I mean, that's where I'm coming from. And density, again, overuse, and hardship, is it a hardship? I don't see the hardship, you know? So, and if there's not going to be any living room, dining room, that scares me. It really does. That's not a fully facilitated apartment, that's a boarding house. So I don't see, now, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I heard him wrong, maybe it all is going to be full facilitated apartments, three of them. But I thought I heard that, and that raised a flag big time. So again, it's nothing against Mr. Stewart. It's a beautiful piece of property, and it's very well-kept, and it'd be nice to keep it that way. You know, because it is, just leaving the city and, you know, but properties are heading downhill in the city. I mean, they really are, and it's a shame. I mean, the North End's getting better, it looks much nicer up there, people are spending money. But in our end of the neck of the woods, it's not looking, it's not looking better, it's looking worse. So that's what I have to say, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. DeLuca?
No.
Okay. We will get clarification on the bedroom, the living room, dining room issue. I think I heard that there would be really no dining room, but maybe just living room, but we'll get clarification when the applicant comes back. Anybody else with concern or opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none.
Did you want to maybe read the letter in that we just?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
It's a short one.
I'm in opposition, and it feels like the person who said is what they would say through the.
Excuse me. Mrs. Presley, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I agree with you. I think we, we are here to give those people opportunity. If, again, let me just state, let's just go back a minute. If there's anybody with questions or opposition, you can feel free to come to the mic and just say, I'm in opposition, and walk away. I just want to make sure that you're heard. The raising of hands from the audience won't, won't, won't work here. So if there's anybody that wants to come up, you have to give your name and address, and just, you can just state, I'm in opposition, and then that's all that we would request from you. So just to make sure that you're on record if you want to be.
My name is Ruth Lyons, I live at Sixth Catherine Street, and I'm in opposition.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mrs., sorry?
Lyons.
Lyons? No? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lyons. Would there be anybody else that wants to speak in opposition or concerns that want to be on record? Okay. Seeing none, I will also read into the record a letter that we got in opposition. Dated the twenty-fourth of April, to the zoning board of adjustment, from Philip Sicilianos. My name is Philip Sicilianos, and I'm a Nashville native for fifty-five years, residing at nineteen Longdale Ave. I requested this letter be submitted to the board and recorded for the minutes. Due to a prior commitment, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting. I'm in full opposition of the proposed variance at three ninety-three Main Street. This property is located in a very busy part of the city and is a focal point and should remain as is. If the board agrees to grant this variance, my opinion is that it will not be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Density and property values will be affected. I respectfully ask the board to consider a denial vote. Sincerely, Philip Sicilianos. So we have that letter. And that was it for, for Les Opposition. So at this point, what we're going to do is, the applicant will have five minutes to come up to speak with, speak in rebuttal. After that, we can take, we can take a moment, but after that, just so you know what the process is, the people who spoke with concerns or opposition, only one person can come back up so you can agree amongst yourselves if you need to do so, or pick a dozenee. But only one person, only one person only can come back up and speak to what the applicant will be talking about right now in, in his rebuttal comments. Okay? So, welcome back. Again, name and address, please.
Tom Burns, TF Moran, forty-eight Constitution Drive, Bedford, New Hampshire. Regarding the, the concerns of, of the residents, specifically heard a number of times, a concern about increasing density, quote, substantially, by adding the additional unit. This is one additional residential unit being proposed in this existing structure. And I cannot state strongly enough, the structure, given the size of the structure, the number of bedrooms in the structure, no new construction proposed, I can understand a question of density or a question of number of units, but there's no new construction proposed. The structure can, can fully support that number of bedrooms. And in fact, as, as Mr. Stewart stated, the number of bedrooms, and I think as Mr. Shaw alluded to, there's nothing that would preclude, if this has two units in it, from eventually having the same, you could potentially, you could rent it out and have the same type of density in terms of the number of tenants in it. So, well, I understand the concern about a density, I think, given the fact that the structure as it is today can support, has that number of bedrooms in it now, and they're basically, it's, you're talking about, it's, it's changing the geometry, the insider reorienting, you know, assigning these bedrooms or this unit, you know, you're renting out this unit, you're renting this unit, renting this, you're going from two units to three, but you still have the same number, or the same number of bedrooms that are potentially in this house as there are today. To answer the question of, you know, the, this question or this implication that it was going to be a boarding house, what Mr. Stewart was stating, and as you, as you correctly surmised, was, what he was saying was that on some of the floors, there's a large dining, he gave an example, there's a large dining room and a large living room. And that somebody renting it won't necessarily want, you know, doesn't necessarily want those two large spaces. What he was saying was that had the potential to become one of the bedrooms if, when, you know, when they're framing out the bedrooms, that somebody may prefer that as a bedroom. He's not talking about taking away the dining room and the living room and having just bedrooms and a kitchen, and that's, that's not what he was talking about. He was just making a point of saying that the way the rooms, that the way the space is, it's such a large structure on the inside with the rooms, that there's the flexibility in there with framing it out, that, that they can either make a bedroom bigger, or they can, you know, somebody can use those rooms for the different use that they, that they would need. And that's how he, and again, as he indicated, he's got three bedrooms, and it's three, three, and two, that can easily be accommodated by the way the layout is today. The likelihood of a frat house or student housing, again, in the RA zone, boarding houses are specifically prohibited by zoning. That's clearly not what this is, this is not what we're applying for. These are, these, these are family units, this is intended to be, intended to be exactly what it is, two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartment units. Regarding the hardship or the, the question of the fifth criteria, whether there is a hardship or whether it's a special condition, again, I would reiterate that I believe that the layout of the structure and the size of the structure and the fact that has existing rooms, it creates a special condition in it of, of itself on the property that makes this a reasonable request to add the additional unit into this, this house. Because again, it can fully support that without any alteration to the exterior of the structure, any alteration to the property. There was a lot of discussion about that this was, you know, and I, and I know it was brought in February, that this is a jewel of the South End. This property has been in Mr. Stewart's family for almost a hundred years now. And one of the purposes of him buying it, rather than let the family sell it to another entity, was to try to preserve that. And, you know, the landscaping, if you drive by this property, is immaculate, the house is immaculate. That's a, that's a testament to Mr. Stewart and his family, who have maintained that house for all these years, and his intention to continue to maintain it in, in that level of character and quality that you see when you drive by this house. And that's, again, we're not changing anything on the outside, and that's one of the, that was one of the key things, was that this, this building can accommodate the entries, can accommodate the units without those alterations. Again, I, you know, I will go back, while I appreciate the comments that have been brought up, and I fully understand the concerns in Nashua and, and from the residents, you know, and I, and I do think it's of no, I don't believe I heard any direct butters that, that spoke to this. I'm not sure if there are any here, but we didn't have, I know in speaking with Mr. Falk after the last meeting, there were no direct butters that spoke either to the project.
Fifteen seconds.
Mr. Stewart and his family, their intention has, has been to keep this property looking the way it has right along and adding an additional unit with the few vehicles that may come with it. I don't believe is going to change the character of this property or the character of the neighborhood anymore than it, it would be as it is today, with the potential to rent it out as it is. Thank you.
Any questions? Just to clarify, and again, there was some discussion by opposition, and I just want to just query you for a minute about that. There was some belief that, that, so are you representing the structure right now as a, as a two-family? Or is it a single-family in-law? Because there's, there's been some question about that or brought up, and I, I'm just curious, what, what. what you or the applicant believes it to be at this point.
No, this is a two-family. The existing second unit has multiple bedrooms in it. That's not an in-law apartment. It is a two-family, it is a two-family unit on there. Going back to, in, I believe it's 1998 in the records, and I believe it's in your, in the information packets that you were given at the last meeting as well, the second electrical panel was put in. It was identified when the permit was pulled as a two-family. I know that there was, there was discussion from opposition that the homeowner herself has implied that this is a one-family or a one-family with an in-law apartment. That's going by, going by the contractor that pulled the permit for the house. It's not the owner of the property that pulled permits back 20 some-odd years ago that indicated, and if you look at the permits from one to the other, it jumped all over. It was clearly somebody that was, you know, if they're working on a portion of the house, that's what they're applying for the permit for. I'm sure they, you know, they may not necessarily have even walked through the house and seen that there was one there, but that's not the owner that was signing those applications on there.
All right. So, all right.
But it is, it is a, it is a two-family.
Okay. I was just trying to get your point on that. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
The opposition has opportunity to come back. I don't know if you've decided on who you'd like to come back. Do you have an address again, please?
Hi, Mike Siciliano, 95 Taylor Street. The applicant states it's a two-family. If you look at the package I presented to the board this evening, if you look at the city document dated July 25, 2005, I believe, signed by a city official, the city official wrote in, "It's residential, single-family." If you look at, if you look at the first page of my documents, supporting 393 Main Street, the current tax card on the assessor's comment card, right here, 393 Main Street, the second unit is called an in-law. I took this off the website this week. It's classified an in-law by the tax assessor's office. I went into the public record, and I did a detailed survey of all the documents in the folder for not only 393, but 402 and 392. This document states that the renovated area above the garage shall not be converted into a living unit. The land use application was permitted with that stipulation and those conditions back in 2005. So, as I asked in February, and I asked tonight, I'd like to know what the legal status of the property is before a decision can be granted on the requested variance. It can be said it's a two-family, but technically, what is it? In 2004, Ted Evans, the city official, as you saw this in last February, put these handwritten notes into the public folder. He says, "There's no single-family within law, no such record of such." Says, "Two-family. Electrical permit, 1998, no such record of such. Assessor office shows, single-family." This isn't 2004. For a house that's almost over 100 years old, that's recent history. So, I asked the board, "Do we inquire as to what the legal standing of the property is?" Because number 402 Main Street, it's a legal two-family home. It's being taxed as a three-family, but it's a legal two-family home at number 402. Number 392, it's not a three-family. So, I just wanted to establish the basis as to what the house really is. I understand, and I applaud the board's desire to exercise its discretion, to maximize flexibility in granting the variances. As a homeowner, I want to manage my own property as I see fit, subject to reasonable constraints. However, the application before the board does not like a request to encroach on a setback to construct a shed or expand a garage or construct a deck. This is something altogether different and involves an increase in density that is inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhood, and it will affect property values. If the application is granted, it will be the first instance in this neighborhood where a three-family tenement has been allowed and will establish a precedent to the detriment of the neighboring properties. I ask the board to deny the application. Thank you for your attention. Any questions?
This is a 1991, this is a permit.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's 392. Okay. All right, we're going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Who'd like to start?
I'll start.
Go ahead, Mr. Deluca. Thank you, Mr. Deluca.
Do I have a bulletproof shield or something like that? Okay.
You're good.
There are lots of things about this application that concern me, not the least of which is the uncertain history of the building and what its legal status is today. The, you know, is it, is it actually a two, is it actually two-family, one-family within-law department? That, that's interesting and sort of relevant, but I think we could, as a board, say, ignore that question and to say, yes, we would allow this as a three-family or not. However, given the substantial opposition of the neighborhood to it, and the location, the traffic, the 50% increase in density, which is what this is, I have finding trouble to support this.
Go ahead.
I kind of get back to the area variance. So, we're here at three, not four, looking at a fresh sheet of paper with three, you know, but the, it's still quite a reduction of land area. Again, you know, per code, you know, 21,780,000 square feet are required, and there's 12,480 square feet. You know, when, when I look at the topographical portion of this, and, you know, I guess I'd say in short, I feel it's tight for a three-family. It's probably tight for a two-family, but, you know, there's some land there. You know, I think that's part of what zoning is about, is to have that element of open space about it. I guess something I didn't really dawn on me till the testimony tonight is some of the construction that's gone on, like the element of, you know, building what was, I guess, it clearly says not supposed to be living space over the garage, but is living space. And then there's a, you know, request with all these bedrooms. So, if you just look at that quantity of bedrooms, there seems to be a unique situation where a three-family is warranted. But, you know, it's a uniquely shaped lot, and that is, you know, and what they're asking for is, you know, it's barely making 60% of the land area. So, I'm struggling to find support for it, and I guess I'll wait to hear what others on the board have to say.
I also struggling with this application. You know, I think this home, you know, one of the, I think the biggest issue is that it's just so out there, right? It's just so in your face, right? It's on a busy corner. I think, I think, you know, to somebody's point earlier, you know, if this was situated differently, you know, there may be different thoughts. But it is what it is, and it is where it is. What I'm struggling with right now is the fact that, you know, and again, there has been, and there was an addition put on to the home several years ago, but it is what it is today. It's what's existing. What I'm struggling with is, you know, again, the, it's the size of the home that's there, the fact that there is, you know, again, whether or not, you know, we look at the lot, you know, there's a lot, we would like more space where the lot size should be, but I know, I think that there is, again, plenty of parking, and I'm trying to, in my mind, trying to understand the impact of the third family. Now, I understand it from the opposition's point of view, but from a use, a use of the property, would I see a difference in the use from a three-family than if it were to remain the same in a very large family moves in? You know, again, this is where I'm struggling with, with this. And again, struggling with the fact that, you know, if we were to deny, in my mind, for me, what would I be denying, you know, in, denying for? And again, I hear what the opposition is presenting. I hear what the applicant is presenting. But again, I'm just struggling with, this is not a home that they're asking to put an addition on. This is not a home that doesn't have adequate parking at this point, you know? I think those things kind of are making this a little difficult for me to try to go either way. So, go, Mrs. Shaw.
So, I think, like my colleagues, I have my own struggles with this also, because in one sense, I look at it as there's maybe not really that much difference in intensity of use, whether this is done as two units or three units. They're not adding additional space. I do realize there's a little bit of this question about some of the work that was done, and maybe how that should really contribute to the living space, but we're not, we're not talking about additional doors or additional changes to the exterior or anything that is going to kind of reinforce or necessarily change the appearance or expectation about what this property is about. But at the same time, if I look at, you know, our kind of, the first criteria we typically look at when we're talking about these applications, it's about that the proposed use of property, given the special conditions, can't be sought by the applicant by some other method reasonably feasible. Well, you can also flip it the other way and say, yeah, this property has been in existence for a very long time, and it's, it's being presented as a two-family right now. I recognize that there's even some question about that, but even if we just go there, it's, it's had a long history, a parent history of, as a two-family structure. This total square footage, I think it's a pretty large home. I think it could be divided into two or three units, and it probably could support a level of either two very large apartments or, or units versus three still reasonably sized ones. So, I'm kind of mixed in the sense of, I don't really think that if this gets converted to three units, that it's going to appear that material different in usage. I think there is some concern that it still could have a different level of density, because you now have three potential units of different, you know, folks that are going to be there at the property. So, you know, as far as intensity of cars and whatnot, I'm not sure that really should change all that much, but I guess, I don't know that I really see that there is a compelling need, and, you know, Mr. Carrier emphasized it, and it's, it is, it's a, there's a very significant shortfall. I think technically it doesn't even meet the criteria for two-family as far as just the area calculation, or if it does, it just is barely. So, but clearly, to have three units, it's, it's a pretty significant deviation, and the neighborhood does not have a significant number. And, you know, Mr. Siciliano presented us with a lot of data, and it definitely seems to support, and especially calling into question some of those other multi-unit properties, but bottom line is, this is mostly truly a single-family neighborhood. So, I'm really having trouble kind of seeing that the special conditions really exist, that truly warrant why this should be used as a three-family, when I think a two-family unit could still be a reasonable use for this property.
I concur that I too am struggling, and I struggle for a lot of reasons. One, the egress, the entrance and exit of cars in such a congested area. Will that cause accidents? I don't know. When you're doing new construction, or you're adding, you're changing the footprint, have you considered ADA regulations? Have you considered individuals with disabilities? Have you considered access for somebody who could move in and becomes disabled? Is there a parking place for a handicapped van, all with an access aisle, which would allow them to enter and exit their van, which needs to be eight feet? I mean, there has to be, there's other things that trigger for me what's going to happen. The other side, we don't have a document that categorically states it's a legal two-family. We do, however, have documentation that states you cannot use this as residential, it's, or a living area when something was added on. Work was done without permits. This is not listed as a two-bedroom. It is, I mean, a two-family. It's a one-family with an in-law, but that's not on record. So, what I see us being asked is to take something that pretty much is non-conforming and bless it, and make it conforming by giving permission to now jump from a one to a three, and yet, the biggest issues I have are around individuals with disabilities, and I have heard nothing in February or now to alleviate those fears. And the ADA is specific, and this is not addressed at all. So, I, actually, I probably would vote no. I'm a no.
There's no testimony, I'm sorry, this time. We're in a public meeting. I'm sorry. And we should just probably address ourselves, not the audience, because we don't want to give the implication.
Okay.
And again, no, no, it's okay. And I think sometimes when we address the audience, and despite, I mean, I think that they think that they can apply. So, again, I just don't want to make, I want to make sure that they understand that. Okay. But thank you very much, Mr. McKay. Any other discussion?
I'm not sensing a threesome supporting this.
Are we, I mean, those who are feeling with no support, are you feeling no support with enough conviction to vote that way? Or do we need to discuss this? Should we discuss this some more, or talk about, you know, what, maybe the motion with Carrier, or is there a volunteer to try to make a motion at this point?
I'll volunteer.
All right.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
This is an area and a use variance. Are you going to do, as Mr. Carrier did, and put them together in one motion? Are you, because I have to write it separately, and so...
Maybe it's better to do separate motions, what I'm...
There's the use variance in here.
I'm willing to do that, so we can, we can do the...
So, maybe in this case, it'll be more clear if there's any, any question in the future. So, yeah, if you can make a separate motion for each, and we'll definitely help you on the way. I know Mr. Carrier is an expert.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Shaw.
We'll do the use motion first. Like to make the... Like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Charlotte P. Tibbo, revocable trust. Applicant is John Stewart, address 393 Main Street. Requesting a use variance from land use code section 19015, table 15-1, to convert an existing two-family home into a three-unit multifamily building. This is in the RA zoning district. The motion is to deny the variance. The board feels that the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given that it has been used as a two-family home for many, many, many years, that there are no special conditions of the property that would change this and we believe that the benefit sought by the applicant to make use of the house can be achieved by other reasonable methods. The change to a three-family would not be within spirit and intent of the ordinance for this zoning district. We have testimony and the board believes that changing this building to a three-family would adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels and that such a change would be contrary to the public interest and substantial justice would not be served.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor to deny the use variance? Okay, that's five in favor of denial. Nobody in opposition of denial?
Okay. Like to make another motion on behalf of the owner, Charlotte P. Tibbo, revocable trust. Applicant, John Stewart, address 393 Main Street. The request is a variance from land use code section 196, table 16-3, for minimum land area. 12,480 square feet is existing, 21,780 square feet required, zoning district RA. This motion is to deny the area variance. The board believes that the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property and that the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method without requesting, requiring an area variance. The proposed variance is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Granting it would affect the property values of surrounding parcels, given the significant added density. Such a variance would be contrary to the public interest and substantial justice would not be served.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Mr. Carrier, second motion. Any discussion on the motion?
I mean, I think it's also worth noting that part of, you know, this request is really in some ways not applicable any longer by not granting the previous use variance. So there is, that's a further compelling need as far, or compelling reason not to endorse an area variance when there is no longer support or consideration for going to a third dwelling unit, so.
Yeah, so noted. Are you okay, Mr. McKay?
Oh, yeah.
All right. All those in favor denying the area variance? That is five in favor of denying. Sorry, application's been denied. You do have a 30-day window of appeal. Thank you very much for coming. With that, I'll close the public meeting on this case. We have meeting minutes. Just go over the meeting minutes first. We have two sets of meeting minutes, one from March 27th and one from April 10th.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Maybe we could just ask the folks to exit the...
Excuse me, folks. We're still in session, if you don't mind going up the hall. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have two sets of meeting minutes. We'll start with the first one, the March, oh, sorry, Mr. Carrier.
No, I had a question on the March.
Okay.
So on the March 27th, meeting minutes on page seven, I had made a motion to allow an additional five minutes for Attorney Godisman. That, earlier in this session, I had made a motion to allow an additional five minutes for the attorney, whose name escapes me, but was representing the Bridges to speak and Mr. Shaw seconded that and we allowed him to speak in that additional five minutes.
It was Attorney Leonard.
Leonard. And then Attorney Godisman was up presenting his opposition, was out of time, and I made a motion to allow five minutes. I thought Mr. Shaw seconded that as well. Here it says unintelligible, but that was just my memory, so I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, I think you're right, but I couldn't recall with certainty, but...
And it might not have been auditable.
Seconded by who was it?
So it was Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I don't think it was audible. I think I was looking and he went like that and that's how this ended up being unintelligible.
Okay.
I remember that, yeah.
And then the other, on page, the other question I have is on page 22. In the middle of the page, it says, speaking in opposition, no one, and then motion by Mr. Lionel, seconded by Mr. Shaw and the motion carried. And then, right where it says motion carried unanimously 5-0, it goes back and it says Ms. McKay has no problems with the request. And then there was a motion by me to approve the request and seconded by Mrs. McKay and motion carried 5-0. And I didn't know if we made two motions there or maybe there's some garbling of the motion here. Does anybody recollect, again, on page 22 in the middle, a motion is made by Mr. Lionel and seconded by Mr. Shaw and it says motion carried? That seems good, but then it goes Ms. McKay says she has no problem with the request. You know, it's as if we're still...
Yeah, we were still in...
Still debating. And then there's a motion by Mr. Carrier to approve it and seconded by Mrs. McKay and it was approved 5-0. And I was baffled by that. I don't recall that. I'd have to...
There was, this is, which one is this? This is the addition with, the one, the motion that I've given here is about a sign.
Yeah, but this is a copy and paste error.
Yeah, I missed this when I reviewed it.
Because that's, that looked, we could probably go back and figure out where it maybe came from, like, previous.
Something saying is that this could be...
I think on page 22, where it says motion by Mr. Lionel, I think that's inadvertently inserted.
From page 19?
That's what I was just reading.
I was looking down here where...
And so I think it should just be, where it says motion by Mr. Lionel, I think it should be struck down to where it's, Ms. McKay says she has no problems with this. I think that is inadvertent insertion.
Yes, I think that's correct.
So this all comes out?
Yes, that, you know, four inches or so of text comes out.
So motion to motion?
Yeah, should be...
Motion to motion, yeah, that's it.
No, 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 no. Oh, well, sorry.
Yeah, because the motion is then on page 23.
Well, when she says...
No, but there's the discussion at the bottom of page 22.
That's germane, I think it's supposed to be...
Yeah, it stays in.
That stays. That's why it said motion to motion.
Where it says motion by Mr. Lionel, where it then says motion carried unanimously.
Right.
Because the other part is just motion later.
No, that fits.
That's where I misunderstood.
This would get struck.
It's just a half a page.
Right.
Should be deleted.
Okay. All right, we're with that. Anything else, Mr. Carrier?
No, that was the only two flags I came upon.
All right, so with that, I make a motion to approve the March 27th, 2018, meeting minutes, seconded by Mr. Shaw. And all in favor? That's five of us. All right, the next meeting minutes we have is the April 10th, 2018, meeting minutes. Is there any discussion or corrections on this?
I didn't see any corrections. I'm okay with it.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, actually, right in the beginning, just the date is listed wrong. It should be April 10th.
Ah.
In the first little intro there.
Oh, yeah.
April 10th. Okay, so noted, so noted.
You guys are good.
Correction is on.
Anything else?
That was all that.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the April 10th, 2018, meeting minutes.
This was a test.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Mr. Lionel seconded.
You can report back to Mr. Falk that we succeeded.
You guys passed.
All in favor of approving the April 10th, 2018 minutes? That's five, nothing. All approved, okay? Also, in our package, we had the agenda for the next meeting and see if anybody sees any regional impact.
I guess a question from Ms. Borrier or Ms. Wilkins. Echo Avenue, I'm not familiar with that. What's that near?
12 Echo.
It's what, five? That's what, five.
Southwest corner.
Yeah.
It could be right on the Hollis or Dunstable border.
I don't think that far.
Google it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll...
Yeah, I think it, I don't think it is, but I can't place it either. It's one of those, I have a vague sense of it, but...
I have no sense of directions and I'm not even going to weigh in on this.
And I think the application itself is not something of major...
Well, it's true too.
Well, actually, it's near Westgate Crossing, so it's nowhere near down.
Okay, so, yeah, there we go.
They are, so it's not anywhere.
And then one on the back, Caldwell Road, I don't know where that is.
Caldwell Road, off of one.
Yeah, it's off of, yeah.
We know where that is.
It's off of one road, right? So, all right, so no one sees any regional impact?
No, for Jack.
No?
No.
Nope, Mr. Lionel, no. It's five noes.
Okidoki then.
Okay, is there any other business, anything that you have?
I have nothing.
Okay. I want to thank Mrs. Wilkins for sitting in for Mr. Falk.
You're welcome.
All right, do I have a motion, Mr. Shaw?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion is to adjourn?
Seconded.
Mr. Carrier, second, motion adjourned? All in favor? All right, we're adjourned at 8:33. Thank you.